Move out.
So I can see that.
And Eve never did early.
We're on to uh.
Where are you? Earlier. Not early, just closer to time.
Dice is water.
Defense.
There's water.
All right, we are back from recess, call the meeting to order. We will begin with uh fund. Eleven nineteen, which is Clark's Perpetuation Fund. One 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 nine, it's. Yeah, I see. That's just the SBS portal, so I think we can move on. Next fund is Cume Ridge. Don't see highway back yet um. Oh, well. Yeah, I don't know that there's that much with Q bridge, we did move some. People.
You just took one out and put it in.
Put one out, put it in, put it into MVA. By the time you get settled, Josh, we may be done.
Uh huh.
By the time you get settled, we may be done.
Yeah, okay, that'll be great.
Not completely.
Build that door.
Yeah. I'm ready.
Yeah. Is it? Was there anything you have on Q bridge right now um? I I would know that Josh and I, oh, and I know you talked to Greg too, that. We're gonna have the the bridge engineer here at the October meeting.
Yes.
To go over long term expenses on the. Um, on our bridge forecast for work moving forward over the next few years. But that'll be, that'll be a regular business item at our October.
Correct. Yeah, in fact, the two boss culvers while ago that you guys went over. Them is also on the ten year bridge plan, so we're just running consecutive as we're supposed to be running with it. So.
Those were, those were the bridge line items and and seated.
Yes.
No, it was in.
Or no. Edit, yes.
I don't. I don't have anything on Q bridge as it stands with the reductions that we took out at the previous meeting. Let's let's look at the revenue real quick on Q bridge.
Bridge revenue. Three hundred.
So, yeah, by taking those employees out too, we reduced. What is it? So revenue on Q bridge is three forty eight. And our expenses are uh two fifty eight. But if we had to take those employees out, we'd have been over the uh.
Yeah.
Been over the revenue. Yes.
Yeah.
Anything, anything for these guys on Q bridge? We can uh, we'll, we'll, we're staying in our order, guys, so we're gonna go to CCD and we'll get you back here real soon. So CCD, the only expense we have in all of CCD, which we already took a motion on. Was to put the cop payment in the CCD. Which will bring that to uh. One oh nine, three eighty nine. So we've already taken our action there. We're ready to go to. Uh eleven forty eight, Seda. I was in Q cap development.
Yeah.
Four oh six oh nine. Yeah, that's the only expenditure.
For that. We kept that, right?
Yeah. We already, already took the motion between the, between the two. All right, the drug free community. This one always uh writes itself mid-year. So uh we. No, I don't see any need to. Well on that. She comes in always mid-year and does a true up on whatever her actual funding is. Once it's received. All right, Recorder's Enhancement Fund. Is uh thirteen. Thousand is the request, that's down from last year's request. But it's uh. Any reason to stay there? And move on to the firearm training. Misland expense, twelve thousand. That stays level. I think we are ready for public health eleven fifty nine. So didn't really have any. Big notes, obviously, the insurance did come out and that moved the commissioners. The. Revenue in public health for next year is estimated at two fifty nine, three seventy four. Right now, we're at two forty four, six ten. We do need to act on the equipment. As to be consistent with our rules. You had a uh office equipment in medical line items. Each in the amount of five hundred, are those, those aren't necessarily anything specific, are they? Those are just what comes up.
Right.
Is there anything else we're not thinking of or need to discuss here besides the equipment?
What we know is a thing you might wanna consider in some ways, you know, there's no mosquito labor.
True.
That what I'm sorry. No mosquito labor.
No, we don't have anyone to do it.
But we couldn't, we couldn't necessarily increase that now because the advertisement. Can I have a motion on the equipment requests? On the office equipment and medical equipment, Greg moves, is there a second?
Say it.
We made a second. All in favor? Is there anything else you need to go over on this right now before we get, we've gotta go to health first next? And the, the eighty four forty, is that the revenue amount? I think we left that off the revenue sheet here.
That's the amount you would find, fifty eight thousand four. They don't.
Yeah. The only thing on eleven sixty one is the food sanitaryian position. I had budgeted for sixteen hours. And just based on page request and then uh she's no longer with us. And I didn't know if we could put it back to twenty four, if I'd have to do an additional or.
Our only choice at this time would be to take it from somewhere else to put it in that line item, which can be done now. That you're gonna have to. We have to figure out what that is and cut it, and I don't know that there's. Any place to do that other than salaries that are already spoken for. What's the group insurance there on that? On, on there. There's still an eight thousand dollar line item group.
Amanda's. No, sorry, the nurse. The portion of the nurses group insurance.
But we left that one there, that one didn't move to commissioners because it was coming from the dedicated funding.
Right, we didn't remove any of those that were currently there.
We just consolidated the ones that were essentially tax funds and or same spot.
Kind of the health insurance, so yeah, it was just.
Yeah. It was by understanding that you were thinking that. You might have to offer the position more hours to recruit someone, is that?
Yes.
And is that just for restaurant inspection? And food inspection?
They changed the whole um. Everything about food, so whoever takes that place will have to go through all that training. I know right off the bat, there's forty hours of training.
Think the thought is that you would just. Do your hiring, advertise, and if you see you need that. To recruit. Positions. See what you find with the advertisement and then, you know, then readdress it. At that point.
You guys have a balance. So, or you get to eat.
Right.
Yeah, I definitely have the funding, yeah.
You don't have the, the long term funding, keep it at that, at that level. Because it'll, because you're spending more than what you're bringing in, so eventually that erode, erode away if you increase that.
But it was funded, sixty.
Yeah, it's always been funded out of.
You said eleven sixty, yeah, eleven sixty eight is, that's the first.
And that is now eleven sixty one.
Yeah. You'll eleven sixty eight my way, right?
No, we haven't, we have money in.
We don't have anything budgeted.
We have nothing but.
And we have no revenue.
No, no longer does it get ready. But. Who knows where they're gonna go with this account first, I mean, they, there's some indication that. As how first it's gonna go away. But.
No one's told us that, but. It'll have to. That's kind of the rumor.
Is there any equipment in here, there is, there's a. Again, that's more or less a placeholder in your.
Yes.
Technology equipment.
Yes.
And two thousand for office equipment.
Well, the two thousands for instructional supplies, so that means when we have to go out and do these programs that they wanted us to do. We have to be able to offer. Instructions on what we're there for. Whether it's quit smoking, then we have to get some kind of pamphlets out that show.
Yeah, I see that, there's two thousand for structural supplies, but there's also a. Office equipment line item two. Two thousand. Forty six of one. If you don't have plans for that. That potentially could be transferred down to the sanitaryian line item. Which might be enough to help cover your. Dedicated training period.
When, so the carryover money, is that something that we could use?
Yes, but it would require an additional after the first year.
Okay.
I wouldn't call it carryover, it's just, it's just like a savings account, it's, it's a better way of.
Well, the state calls it carryover, and it's all laid out, where we would put certain.
Because they've already funded it.
Cause they wanna see who's gonna put the money off.
Spin on their.
Yeah.
I'm switching on, if they would find the person they want to hire now.
You could do it now, yeah.
You can do it now, if you've already got that money in, but.
Yeah. Okay. I think I'd like to do that route.
Have you advertised the position yet?
No, not yet.
Do you wanna leave the office equipment alone? Is that your preference?
Yes.
I would need a motion for, for the equipment in which it aligns, six oh one for office equipment. And then also the uh. It's not six thirty five, technology. Max moves, is there a second?
Second.
Eric Simmons. All in favor? I. Motion carries. Is, is there a. Better than that, so that leaves our total at eighty four forty, which matches the revenue. I think we just have to keep us updated on the sanitaryian.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so local rodent street. Is next. With uh. With repair. Nine total is. Two hundred fifty thousand. You, you know, estimated revenues two forty seven. Do we wanna make that match the revenue? Local roadie street revenue is. Am I in the right, am I in the right column?
Yeah, that's what BLG is.
Yeah. I had two fifty two. Two forty seven, two forty three.
But the LGF says, right, um, very. SG may have said something else. These places are mostly the LGI.
I think you got the equipment repair. Fuel oil alone. In motion. I'll make a mention to uh. Repair ninety seven thousand. We're just doing that. Now, I'm still here. Josh is here. Oh, she's just laying down.
She's back here, trying to wake her up.
We're just doing that to match the revenue.
Cause we get it, I get it, that's why I'm on.
Yeah.
Speaking of.
All right, so motion's been made, seconded, and we vote all in favor. If I, the second. Did you second it?
Sure. Second.
Maybe you didn't, I didn't know. Okay, so we took the motion, we voted, and we got the second.
The motion was.
The motion was made by Greg to take uh equipment repaired to ninety seven thousand, Eric seconds in uh all favor. All right. That brings the total for. LRS to two forty seven. All right. Mr. Young, we're on to eleven seventy, public safety. Hardest one to predict, the one of hardest funds there is to predict revenue on. All we've really got to look at is our history.
I'm saying that. Local income tax is going down some.
Is that what we projected?
Eight oh two, eight oh two, one thirty seven is the projected uh. Income tax. Yeah, and. The total estimated revenue is, is. Two point seven. Two point seven oh one. And cash on hand of. Seven hundred thirty four thousand.
Now that's at the beginning of forty six. One one forty six, that's my guess.
Oh, I'm sorry, cat, current cash on hand is uh. I, I thought that was.
No, that's estimated.
Okay, so, well, that's. Pretty close.
I learned that bottom line is two hundred and one to start out.
Yeah. So, eight twenty seven, four ninety seven. It's high. About twenty thousand dollars. Hold tight. The estimated revenue on the.
Back when they prepped the budget on, on the issue.
The, what the LGF put out was. Oh, yeah, okay.
And they're definitely saying we're not going to get. Any supplements in tax, which is, which is going to affect both.
All right. Are we uh. Were you wanting to try to do the extended warranty?
Yes, you are, that's true, I talked to commissioners and Mark. Was a hundred percent agree that they, they, they felt.
And, and that's built, that is built in?
Yeah. It's in uh, professional services, I think. Uh, yeah. Should have been a forty three eight.
Yeah, that's where it's at.
Are you still horny on those? We are right now, yeah. Very normal type of effects. Which we should go out, uh, probably, I guess in February. This February. And say, one, three, I'm not using very, that seems like it. Okay. Well, and having talked to. Having talked to our rep about it. They will do the five year contract, and then they will do their second five year contract after that. And then after that, they will do them on a yearly basis. So we can get two of the five year contracts out of these cards. Or they weren't to send us, so.
Is that? Is that, except twenty four hundred, no, that's the. What, what, how much is that in the contract?
Seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand.
What's one card costs?
Thirty three and thirty four. But that's just a hot, correct, there's another piece. There's another piece of that, which is for auto loading portion, which is another thirty seven thousand.
So each one unit, one unit is.
So this contract for seventeen thousand, it's essentially the extended warranty on ten different. It's the five cops and the five auto motors. But that also includes batteries, loading parts on the car. Recertification, recertification, all of that, so. They cover batteries also. And the yearly inspection of the new employees.
Those batteries recharge often. Car system.
Yeah. How much per year? Seven seventeen thousand, thirty four dollars.
And, but that covers.
All the innings. Parts, parts, labor, travel, preventive maintenance, batteries and surface.
And there's.
Five or six. Five cards and five. Come on a guess, a battery, you're probably looking at. A thousand, fifteen hundred dollars. I guess.
Well, we asked you to do the research on it, and you're making recommendations to us. The last meeting, you were still researching.
Yeah.
So that's, you're, I'd take heart and what you're saying.
Last two months, you guys wanted a, ran down on trucks and mileage, you should have kept it on email. The one that's on there, the zero zero one four, that's the one that's being replaced with. The remount that you approved in twenty twenty three. And I know that has less mileage than some of our others, but. It's the one that has that six oh liter diesel engine and. It's the one that replaces, it's very dry again, so. The one for that, that's a little short.
So that's, that's the first one out, is zero zero fourteen. That's, that's once replaced by the one on over.
The next one. That I put in the budget. Would be for the eighteen eighty eight.
Twenty six.
Twenty sixteen, Shady.
Two hundred ninety four thousand.
Right. Which by the time we get it. You know, seven miles of the.
So that's where we are, I guess, on, on, on your budget conversation is. Knowing that this lead time. Is. Months. We'd budget this money now, we still know we won't spend it in twenty twenty.
If we order it. If we ordered in twenty twenty six, his best testament was sometime in twenty eight. That we would see.
All right, have you talked to commissioners about moving forward with your order now?
Their, their thought, talking to Mark, his thought process is. Go ahead and bid to. Knowing that, and with that being said, we did talk to Val and talk to the rep from the company. Knowing that, and with that being said, we did talk to Val and talk to the rep from the company, and they've got it worked out in the language. That we can bid it, and up until the time it goes on the line, we can back out if we don't want it. So it will be more or less, they'll be bidding a placeholder. And locking the price. Do both of those, have that locked, and then if, when it gets closer, if we can do it fine, if we can't, that's fine too. But then also.
Would both of them essentially? Go into, if, if everything was approved, they would potentially go into production at the same time?
Maybe, maybe not. We can, they can adjust that a little bit, but the one thing is, the one is a new build. So the twenty sixteen is a completely truck, because they will not recertify that box. Because that box was initially nineteen ninety eight. That was remounted in twenty sixteen, and they're. They're saying that box is too far out. From when it was initially built, and we're not going to recertify it. So that is a new bill. The other one would be. The twenty nineteen Ford, taking the boxes on that truck. And putting it on the new chest. So it'll be a rebound.
Then one advantage that this would give in talking with you is that if we were ever to have a vehicle accident of some shape or form. We have essentially an insurance policy placeholder, because if we have an accident with the ambulance or whatever, when it goes down, we now have the two year timeline.
And even Mark's thought process with that was order, do one every year. Knowing that we might take it and we might not. But at least. We have that slot, knowing that if we need something, it's only a year away versus.
People allow you to leave it.
Yes. And the reason, the reason they will. They are, last time I checked, they were like eighty behind.
Right, but imagine if every, every side could have.
But what that does, if you cancel out, it just pushes your, the next order up. The other thing it does. Back prior to COVID, all these companies had demo vehicles. Or vehicles that they could take out to places and say, look, this is what our product is. Are you interested in it? Now they don't have that, because as soon as anything comes off the line, somebody's wrecked one. And so, or somebody, hey, this truck was going to be okay, but now it's not, we've got to have something different. Most of the time they're sold before they come off the bottom. So, and my rep is like, that, that gives us the opportunity to maybe get one. That. We can take around to show it to you, because we don't have that.
I put a demo build in a slot that we're, yes.
Right. And we. I've got email from the company that they agreed with the vows wordage and, you know, that we would put that in the bid, and yes, we can back out of that. Without any repercussions. And I asked him, I'm like, what, what is your thought process on putting one in every year? He's like, if I agree, I would.
So we're really talking about two different issues. The one, the one issue is, how do we work together to give authorization to you to? Order something that's years out, that's not, that's not in the budget, right? We're talking about twenty twenty eight money.
Right, and we.
Yeah. And, and, and the second piece of that is, you have a truck that is currently on orders, that is in this year's budget. That is going, is going, probably not going to be delivered until early twenty six, right?
Correct. It's not even gone.
So that would be, that will be an incomers. And that money is coming out of the eleven seventy fund, right?
Two hundred and nineteen.
Which would drop our cash balance in. The, in eleven seventy, you pay for that. Profit's coming. So where I'm going with this is, do we? From an accounting standpoint, leave. A truck in the twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty six budget. That we're not going to be getting until essentially twenty twenty eight. And I don't know that we need.
As large as that. You can't order it unless you have an appropriation on it yet.
Yes, you can. That's what we're trying to track, that out, that's what I'm saying, if we get that worked out.
With the wording that he's agreed to, the vows agreed to, and the companies agreed to, we can't order it. Without an appropriation, and I'll read it to you if you want. Well, you know.
But a lot on that delivery day and build day depends on how many people back out before us. So we can go from, we can go from eighty to sixty really quick. And it bumps the whole timeline up now. So.
So the wording that they both agreed on was bidders acknowledge that due to significant lead time and letting of bids, actual production and delivery of equipment. Any ultimate contract to purchase will be subject to the appropriation of the funds at the time of confirmation. For purposes of clarification, the county shall have the right to cancel any contract without penalty. Prior to confirmation, due to the unavailability of funds. Confirmation is the date the bidder orders the chassis and the box. Bidders must notify the county at least thirty days prior to confirmation date. And order for the county to seek appropriation of the funds.
Company or county to come.
Maybe both.
I'll send it to you, you guys can read it. Like I said. Val.
Not, not to cut you off, but to my point. We're not being asked to approve it today. We're not being asked to appropriate it today. Other than a placeholder in budget. So, so, so I, I'm all about handling this administratively, but I, I think we need to deduct the. The two fifty five nine out of, out of the budget. Production.
I think we can. I mean, we can go ahead with the bid process, the in, the inline process, and when. When that time comes, then we look at it.
But for your, for your order to.
That's what the commissioners. Were looking at.
I think we have some kind of resolution or something at the time of the order. That, you know, kind of commits counsel to. Work with the commissioners to commit. Million dollars at that time. Or, or at least an acknowledgement of this process.
But the thing is too. The sooner we move forward bidding, awarding. Sooner we can lock that price, because I know the pricing pieces along the year, yes. Which I think, I have to look, that, that price that was in there was forwarded to. Ink truck, and I think the remount was close to that.
But does it make sense to, when you bid it? To, to bid two and have an alternate in the bid that reserves the right to. Exercise that in a, at a later, you know, time to have an offset between. I must think if you bid. For bid one for delivery day X and bid a second one for delivery J P.
Maybe, yeah, I'd have to talk to him and see how, but he, the rep did say we can. Push a little bit and try to adjust, whether or not both here now.
And you could put, put some wording in your bidding that helps guarantee that.
But with that also being said, one of them is going down, a new line, and one's going down.
A remount line.
That's true. So there are some differences in those times. But either way you go, it's still, you're half, it's two and a half years, so.
Well, your bids are going, they're going to be two bids anyway.
Have to be two bids.
Yeah, because there's two substitute, there's steps to work.
Right, yeah, so you got that.
What's the maintenance upon track with the cars? Do they? Move them from machine truck to truck?
Uh, the.
Is that something I paid for?
The movement of. The car from the twenty sixteen to the one that we had in here is, that's included in that proposal. It was included in the price.
On, on the purchase card.
Yes, yeah. Because we discussed that. And I don't know that we came up with the true. One way or another, whether we have to take it out and send it down there, or they do it at a shop up here. No matter how it goes, the one that's in this truck right now, will we put into that truck? So it's as part of the delivery. That's part of it, yes, you know. And the one that we have. From the twenty three budget, had one figured in, so when it comes back in, we'll have one in. And a.
Well, in the interest of balancing budget, I, again, I think it would be appropriate to make, take a motion to. Reduce the expenditure from the budget. In. Line for forty six hundred, two hundred fifty five thousand nine hundred.
I like that both.
Greg, Greg moves, is your second.
Second.
Eric seconds, any further discussion? Okay, all favor?
I agree.
Motion carries mirrors. That brings us to two point eight seven three four fifty. So. We need to remind you. Official bonds of insurance. We moved that from seventy four to fifty three. Thank you, Chris.
Why we would have fifty three?
What line are you going?
That one, three oh three one two one.
From premiums this year, moving workers' comp. To the line, plus additional ten thousand for increase in new building.
That's great.
We, we, we increased that for some reason from.
We moved, we moved. From one oh seven five oh. The twenty one thousand, that zeroed out, but we moved it to. Three oh three twenty. I have fifty three thousand, we're in that, but I don't have any notes why.
From premiums this year and moving workers' comp through this line.
We work as top budget plus.
Right.
You can put that out.
So Christie pays the workers' comp, now that's right.
Yeah.
So that's, okay.
And then you added ten K.
Right.
For the new bill.
Okay, yep. But, but we're left by a lot more than that, though.
Well, but our premium, the premium. Our premium went up, but if you take the twenty thousand ish out for. The workers' comp, then. That drops the type down.
But, yeah, right now, it's at, the total is at. Two eight seven three four fifty. We, we are, we're about a hundred, hundred seventy two thousand in the red, as far as income versus spins. Yeah, like I said, we do have a seven hundred thousand dollar cash balance, but. It's essentially more than five hundred thousand dollar cash balance when you count that new truck payment that's coming out of there next year.
I think our current balance is closer to.
Current balance, her projective year end balance, so you'll, you'll, they haven't, you know. We've got expenses. Yeah, her projected year end cash balance is seven, it's seven. Maybe both. But. You got your.
That, that does take that ambulance out, so.
Okay, well, if you take that ambulance out, then yes, but that, that will stay in until. We don't want to say salsa, yeah.
Right, it's close.
She's assuming that's. That's, yeah, if you take that out.
And then we could one out. On this, we could one more out.
The huge, the huge variable with, with Chris's stuff is the. Is the, is the missed lineage revenue is building. That's why it's cyclical, up and down. Really, the only thing we have to look at is the overall trend.
Knowing what we, science can apply from your Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement rates, and. Been consistently a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy five thousand a month the last several months, so.
The way we have that moving thing is from that state care. Medicaid. This one, this year, we have that a ninety seven sometime.
Well, they, two payments. Two extra payments from.
Yeah, she's calling for one point eight. So if you take a hundred fifty thousand times, well, that's one point eight million, and she's. Essentially called for almost one point eight to one point nine million, and. Next year's projected revenue, so that aligns with what.
Close, yeah.
And that's being conservative, if we're at a hundred seventy five, we're obviously above that.
Right. And again, we don't know what the. Revenue here is going to be with Medicare, or just their payment rates, which they could.
No, that's not like everybody wants to. If you're closer to a hundred and seventy five, then it's two point one million, and it's for bats. Traditionally, as you know, we've always tried to. We've been trying to get to where we can buy equipment. All big ticket foot knives out of this fund, and that's hard. And we've, we've tried now, we have one in the queue there. If we weren't taking that truck out, we'd be fine, we'd be potentially balanced, but the. Traditionally, we always took like cardiac monitors, cuts. Those others are out of, we've used Q cap development for those purchases, so. I'm still, I still think we've got a really good model in this EMS system, and. It's good to have this discussion. I hate the fact that right now we're setting, you know, around a. One month worth of revenue. That's, we're out, kind of out of balance by around, by around the one month revenue total, around a hundred and seventy thousand bucks, right? There's nothing here in the budget that we can really trim or cut. That's going to be to that. Level without touching. People.
You could conceivably have, could. Conceivably have to make a decision, depending on when the ambulance would arrive.
Whether to pay it out of here or somewhere else.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
True.
That's.
But I'm still comparing revenue to. Expenditures. That's going to have your cash balance, but that's not necessarily going.
Right, I mean, that, that would be into what you would have to do, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's not.
Well, then. Speaking to your point, John, you're one hundred percent right, the only big place is April.
Yeah, and, and, and there's a few little things, like the addition of the utilities and. Yeah, and 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 there's a few little things, like the addition of the utilities and, you know, the stuff for the second station. You know.
But then you cut payroll, then you cut people, then you cut people, then you cut revenue, because you can't do as much.
That's why I have to trust you.
It's a double-edged sword, yeah.
You don't, you don't get the transfer, you don't get the revenue.
We don't get the revenue, our numbers should drop. Our revenue numbers drops.
Last year, the numbers were great. You know, this this year is a little tighter for some reason, and it's probably all death by a thousand cuts kind of thing. Do we leave it as as it is, approved as is, and understand that we're in deficit here, or do we um, and when I say deficit, I just mean that our potential income right now does not match the potential expense.
We have a healthy cash, but it does that, it does have a very healthy cash flow tonight, so.
Is there any equipment out here, Chris, that we needed to, I guess there's the off your office equipment and your last three line items need need a motion to.
Those are the worst, just if something comes up, we got to clear it or take care of it.
Well, is any of that equipment for the new station?
No, I'm thinking we're going to get all of that.
This year?
This year, right.
Part of this, by the bottom line for Doug's position. All right, gentlemen. I'm doing all talking this year. Larry, twenty-two, you want to make this for reduction? Any further discussion?
Uh, I'd just say that have the utmost faith in what you do and hopefully next year, we're not again, having the same conversation and good management and we can, we can kind of hopefully, let's watch this this year and see where we go next, I have to sleep motion passes. Uh, all in favor, any other comments, discussions? All in favor, I oppose. All right, Chris, thank you.
Sorry, you good with going ahead? We're getting this.
Yeah, because I think we do have options with CCD and and edit another areas that we're going to be able to, you know, have have to find solutions for it, okay, so. Definitely, that's my opinion.
But let's, let's get that ironed out with commissioners, so we know exactly how how we're going to proceed, you know, this maybe a timeline in front of us. There's something we need to do to act on it to help support the report that he's about.
The issue in the the council changes.
Right.
You may not have your yes when it's available.
But that's, and and that's where Val has always been, can't bid or you can't word about appropriation. But talking to, you know, me, also understands where we're at, it's like with this wording, I'm okay with that bid being approved, knowing that we can back out of it if the funding gets out there. So I mean, it's still kind of, it protects that possibility. You know, if we've been it and then the council's like, no, not doing that.
Right.
Then we can still get out.
I was saying, as long as you're okay with it, you may not get it whenever it's available.
But the thing is, if we don't bid it and if we don't have it in place, we know we're.
Right, yeah, I agree, I agree.
All right. Moving on, misdemeanors, we're at eleven five. That's the jail. Circle square. Is it, oh, it is time to depart, because you. Brandon, did Jan make it? Okay, I was gonna take that if it was time to do it. We'll move to MVH, I guess. Two point six oh eight is the estimated revenue. We're currently at two point eight nine six. We didn't do those bridge employees over to here, which is a big jump.
The insurance will be taken out, though, right? What on these? You may have took it out on your side, we still got it on on our paper, so.
What insurance, health insurance? Or heart. Helps none.
Haven't started to do.
Now the chart is, yeah.
The workman's column.
Yeah. Hundred and five is reduced for just straight insurance.
Do you still got the workman's comp on your side?
I'm showing on my end. It's a published budget zeroed out, workers, oh, is it okay? The group, the group health is still it. Workers' comp, the property casualty. Where we have the um request from the the request on the wage increase on Melanie's position is an action required item for uh, that's requested by commissioners.
Oh, that's real.
That's the first item under here. Office manager position. We did increase the budget on the overtime because that seems to happen to us every year. And then we have the equipment is as well in here, which is the um yeah, the new, uh, that was a tandem, right, Josh?
Correct.
And that's a new truck, right, new?
Yes.
New vehicle. With all new accessories?
That's all it said, that's a snowplow and a sand bed also included in this one.
Was that a sourceful quote?
Yes.
As far as, yeah, that's a good number.
Pretty well, all I go through anymore is back to source well. That way, all the work, you know, it's pretty well done on that end of it. On the legal side.
And now we're two hundred eighty-eight over expense over income.
With space, yeah, with the LGF, that figure they've given us, the LGF for the last three years, it's been a little low. But I don't have a pattern for how long.
Well, too, we've got a cash balance in that account also.
Yeah, but he's just saying as far as living within the income this year.
Yeah, what what is the cash balance? It's projected to be one million five seventy-seven at the end of the year. Right now, between restricted MVH and MVH, it's uh, two million and two hundred twenty thousand. And I was, and I was thirty-one, saying, I added the restricted, restricted and unrestricted. Together, two million, two hundred twenty-one thousand. And those are not double counted at all, right? Those are those are two separate funds, so there's
Two separate.
There's that much.
Yeah.
We move them as needed.
Well, I think, so that's easily, I guess, explained as the equipment piece then, so I mean, you just look if you but we don't have a lot coming out to fulfill the match.
For community crossings.
Cross, yeah.
Yeah, that would be about half a million dollars. About a half million dollars, should be a little less than that probably.
Sure, there are reductions in that duty crossings, counting up, correct, it's not a crazy much money.
Didn't really hit us until twenty twenty seven.
Right.
What we did this year for next, actually.
We will have us amount to apply for in the
Less.
The regular.
Yeah, they're bringing it back down to a million.
Yeah, they're bringing it back down to a million, though.
Yeah.
So we still will apply until everything gets worked out across the board with the other issues.
We're putting into another, another plan, though, weren't due besides the community crossings.
Yeah, the direct distribution.
Yes.
It's automatic, that many is automatic, once we establish a wheel tax, if we establish a wheel tax, they're, yeah, good.
And right, we're going to get, if we, if we, if we don't establish the wheel tax, we are going to be subject to a reduction in revenue, reduction in what we potentially will get in, our community crossings won't go away, but it will go away as we do it, and we'll have to fight every dollar in a much more competitive program.
Isn't it supposed to go down to eight hundred thousand?
Potential wheel tax exercise.
Yeah.
So that's kind of go and be kind of sparked towards.
It could be bad. Let let me go, let me go through those changes real quick, because this is something that's going to continue to come up, so I think the more we hear it, the more we all understand it, the better off we are. The state is taking, there there used to be around one point or around a hundred and fifty million dollars that was in the community crossings program. Guarantee, that was the minimum that was going to be into that, meaning crossing program. And then all counties and cities apply for that. But most years, it's been well over that, it's been up into the one eighties plus. Going forward, and they've done two rounds per year. And they've done up to, originally, it was a million dollars maximum, and then because dollars were there, it went up to one point five million dollars per app, per unit, and we have always pretty well gotten our max, any any year we've applied. Okay, so next year, for counties that do not adopt a wheel tax, there's going to be a maximum of a hundred and fifty, no, no longer a minimum of a hundred and fifty, a maximum of a hundred and fifty competitive dollars that you apply for. It drops from a, it goes from a seventy-five percent match to a to a eighty percent match, which on the surface you'd think is a good thing. But people are going to apply for larger projects because their match is going to go farther, which is going to erode the hundred and fifty quicker. The dollars that before were above that, that were bonus that they were able to give more money out, now automatically get distributed back out to you. Purdue has estimated that to us. And then there will be a surplus in the first year of that distribution. And and they they anticipate that surplus to us alone will be around a million dollars, if it's going to be, you know, nine hundred thousand plus that that we will get in the first year if we adopt the wheel tips, but at the same time, we're also, if we adopt it, then we're also eligible to apply for the community crossings, uh, which will get us up, but but this is the big but. So now you automatically, if you adopt a wheel tax, you automatically will get that distribution annually, you don't have to apply for it, it's just yours. And you don't have to compete for it. And then you, and then you can competitively compete for the difference between what you do receive in automatic distribution and the million dollar cap. So if we start getting five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars a year, then we can apply for two, three hundred thousand dollars in two, three, four hundred thousand dollars in community crossings there. So they're just structurally changing the whole, the whole thing. But you would also, then, even if you adopt the minimum wheel tax, we would then get couple hundred thousand dollars of more local county road revenue from the wheel tax. That would be in addition to what we, this whole game you have to play over here in the community crossings. So they're, they're essentially forcing our hand to adopt this, or all the counties that do adopt it are going to get more doctors and they're gonna split it up amongst the counties that have the wheel tax. They're the ones that are gonna get, so the more that, the let, the fewer counties that adopt it, then the counties that have adopted are gonna split a bigger, or, or gonna have, there're gonna be fewer counties split the pot and they're all gonna get more money. So, and that's, that's what you're seeing with headlines all across the state. They're starting to wind down now because the deadline to adopt it, you know, was in the month of, month of August, if they wanted to adopt it for twenty six. We don't have to adopt it until twenty six, four twenty seven to be able to participate in the new program. And that's what we're currently evaluating.
Earlier you spoke and said next year it's actually two years.
Correct, it is, it's two years, but we would have to take action next calendar year to participate.
By September.
By, by September one of twenty twenty six, we would have to have our plan in place.
But back to that, uh, is it my understanding that you write most of your grants or you can do most of your grants?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, so we don't pay anybody doing the
No, you don't pay anybody to do any grants, none, none of the parallel aid.
Better at least sometimes when you do for the application purpose, but then you have to have an engineer and I'm not.
But I'm saying being over them projects. We're the one that oversees and makes sure everything is put into place where it should be.
Yeah, I applied for them and then I do all the tracking and then I close the grants out, we're done, so.
You're serving as an engineer. Yep.
Oh, yes, to pay.
Partial.
Everyone will pay for any, and that's, that's the point of the, the raise is just the asset management plan, if we would.
A whole nother thing.
That's, that's, it is, but just in the asset management plan, if we have to pay somebody to do it, in two thousand and sixteen, it was sixty five thousand dollars for someone to do it. So she has saved that much money since then, plus probably what you're looking at now, I'm guessing between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars for one year.
Total unbelievable services.
Is unbelievable, yes.
To manage a, manage a single community crossings application and, and not for a county, for a smaller city, my, my firm, you know, charging up to twenty thousand per, per round from start to finish, by the time you go through all of the estimates, billion. Plus eighty of those things, you know. And then, uh.
We, the bookkeeping, me, we, we play phone back.
My advice would be to stop because they're gonna ask for more, right?
Yeah.
I'm bad at too much, that would make commotion for two of them, that part, we have.
Yeah, we're always a What's your motion now?
To produce the the request on that one.
Got motion for max on, on the request for, uh, the two dollars an hour.
Second.
There.
Yeah, just. Sound back.
Move it over here. Motion's made, say, any, any further discussion on, on that motion? On favor of, uh, on favor of the motion on Melody's? Motion carries. Now on to the equipment, I guess, the dump truck. From one, I can down here.
The one that's in edit.
Yeah, the one that's in edit.
So this is
Just a dumb truck.
Yeah, this is a dumb truck.
That's the, that's the, that's the new tandem with
Yes.
With plow and spreader.
Yes.
Two twenty two, six thirty five.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
I don't have a problem with plowing and using by the dump truck and catching hours, but the cash balance is pretty strong. It's very, it'd be pretty strong, I believe.
I, I agree. I think the, the, uh, what we have to watch is, is we do this every year with any, we've never done this before. Why would we continue? So is, you're not having a problem with it, the equivalent emotion? Greg moves on the equipment request, is there a second?
Thank you.
Friends. Any further discussion on the dump truck? All fair. Host. Next is, I don't think, do you have any other equipment?
No, that's, that was all we put in there.
But there's not like any office firm, if you're
No.
No. Rose, son. Rose, son.
Those are disposable.
They're different, they are. Oh, yeah.
This is the total NBA track now is two point eight seven, seven, two, seven, nine. No, I'm wrong. No, I'm at the wrong call. Two point eight nine six, nine, six, two. There we go. Anything else you're required to add?
You already did, like, since we okayed.
We did, yeah, we did the overtime in the first round. All right. You're not, eight, nine, six, nine, this is the list. We all fall home. Now. Uh, she's got highlighted there. Two point eight nine, six, nine, six, two. That's the number over here for red. Is it?
It's the right.
I wait. Well, that is, that's a bunch of, yeah, that is the question. All right.
Got us?
Thanks, I'll go for now.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Max, let's clarify your motion. Uh, that, that motion would, would be in the, or to exempt. So the two is, is would exempt any future costability adjustment at the end of the session.
However, we think there.
Yes.
Two percent, yeah, in the big three percent, three percent.
It was two dollars plus three percent?
Yeah, yeah, that's incomplete.
That's what's written in there.
Yeah.
I'm buying that job.
Leaving it as is? Or what, what is three percent of the current sound?
What is three percent of the current sound? The one where you're asking. Per, per position now plus three percent. That's what they did. They took the three percent and then they added the two dollars.
She was at forty nine, six.
Yeah, they did not, but the two dollars did not have another three percent put on top. Just a flat two dollars after they applied the previous cost.
For it to come out, for her to be where Kurt's at, it would have to be just a
Worked with the two dollars. Everything rounded up, including that incentive was fifty one thousand dollars.
Say again, fifty one?
Fifty one thousand eight, yeah, that includes her incentive and just the three percent, doesn't include the two dollars.
I guess I'm getting lost in the shuffle.
They were going to need to take root, so. That is
The wage was forty nine, six.
And that puts her at the way to sell with three percent was fifty one, one.
Should be fifty one.
Correct.
Correct. You know, what was it, plus? That's forty nine, six, nine, ten percent, so two times, two times forty one, sixteen. Two thousand eighty, she's forty hour week and flowing.
Yeah.
Forty, sixteen. Plus fifty one away, maybe fifty five, two forty eight. That's my question is, most of, most of the others, when we do a structural change.
We exclude three percent.
We exclude three percent. So I'm just trying to get a diff, handle the difference.
Not getting fifty, sixty two.
Well, yeah, but your incentive is gonna, gonna, gonna change by a percentage also, and that's built into it.
You just handled it, the three percent, coal mine, and put it to one. And that was
What, where's, where's Kurt at, you said? You were trying to
He is above Melanie at all now.
You were trying to equate curse with his, is that what the thought was?
Yes, more or less, but the first hour, you couldn't even do one asset management plan for a year.
He's at fifty five, two. Okay, that's This will put her just above Kurt.
Yes, with the three percent.
Yes.
Barely, yeah. Yes, barely above Kurt and, and, and she needs to be.
So your motion includes
That or five motions, commissioners.
Re- recommendations. That's what we look. All right, thank you, guys. And take another motion to change that at this point. Sorry, this, this box, those are the kind of questions, though, that after we take a final action, they've always come back, Junie will call me eighteen times over the next week and say, we did not discuss whether or not this included the raise or didn't. So I'm trying to be really conscientious.
Blaming it on me, guys, asking who doesn't answer the phone.
Yeah.
That's why you have to call like, who knows?
Then I get the text, John, I really need you to come.
He always answers when I call him.
That tells me something. Ooh, it's deep in it.
I'm trying to make some equation of my life as a fellowship leader.
Hold on.
We're live streaming, I keep getting that, all right. We are at Blackwood. Yeah, no, there is. You had, uh, there was a note on this, right?
Your recorder is perpetuating.
Okay. Yeah, I'm requesting this is a scanning project. Oh, that's what you were saying, scan. That was a new project, so it was not something we currently have under contract. I have a motion to approve the use of the black book dollars for that scanning project. From someone, Jeff moves, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Eric, all favor. All right. The carriers. Move to the, uh, Recorder's perpetuation fund. You remember what that miscellaneous was under there? Was that good? Jeff, do you remember? What you bring, uh, under Recorder's perpetuation fund, there's a miscellaneous expense of five thousand.
I don't, I don't recall that. And
I have any notes on it.
We had an issue.
Yeah. But they haven't spent it either.
I don't I can be from our professional service, sorry, I got that for twelve thousand and a half, but maybe you can get that as a, because he is never on that. For professional services, ours are more regular, so it's a good thing.
Correct. Yes.
That's what I want.
Any if no motions, we'll move on. We are down to sex and violent offender, fifteen hundred. I think that's, stands as is.
Do you just need an motion for the Recorder's perpetuation?
No, we don't need a motion because that stands as, it was, there's no equipment on it.
Basically, no.
Um, sex and violent offender, um, stands as is, is supplemental public defender. Discussed at previous meeting. Uh, we've already done the reduction on the surveyors perpetuation to ten thousand. And I think we are at election registration, unless anyone has anything on the ones I just blitzed through. And I, but I had I didn't have any note in election registration, oh, have we increased registration meals to sixteen, but it is overlooked or something. All right, did you say something about a
He found that he had missed budget. He did not, one of his elections, he did not figure two elections. Uh, you know, he could be one, one lama go.
But I don't know if that's anything we can fix.
No, you can't change the appropriate, it is gonna require a slight change in appropriation, but he knows he'll have to do it by additional appropriation. Change in appropriation, but he knows he'll have to do it by additional appropriation. After this first election.
This is the satellite poll worker.
Yes, we'll move on. Got a bike professional services line item and you know, that's. That's that's the, I'm sorry, that's the drawdown from the election registration. All right, so their election registration total is eighty four nine fifteen. And then, uh, there's the. Uh, county elected officials training fund at four. We just blitzed through that. We we just made the note that he had a miss on the. Yeah, so so we did catch that in budget, right? So we're in. We took that up to sixteen fifty for the meals. So that that that's in there there. But he said he had a poll worker that he isn't, uh. Had not accounted for in the budget. For both for both elections. Satellite of life, that's not her. Think you'd only account for one election. But because we've advertised in a certain amount, if there is a change, it's going to have to be done through. Through an additional. Probably in June after after primary. All right. We started pre-county like those officials training, so that's a dedicated fund. And we are to. So with Parks and Rec, we had. Couple items. The caretaker based off his mid-year adjustment. Last year, uh, they were not recommending a pay raise this year. And so there's not a cost of living adjustment calculated for superintendent, so that need to be exempted from. The countywide. Uh, motion. And then, uh, there was two equipment items. Or a side by side in a truck. And together they told seventy five. Brandon, do you have anything else on besides what I mentioned?
Yeah.
That requires action. Now we have. Pick up truck.
Pick up truck on the side.
Yeah. There's also a truck you just insured was a dump truck, right?
Yeah, it's a used dump truck.
That was really an addition to your fleet, right? That wasn't replacing anything, was it?
Correct.
Yeah.
Take a little word here.
All right. Hope you find that to be very handy enough there.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we appreciate you taking one for the team on the. On the salary adjustment, but, uh. I guess we need a motion to approve that. Approve that request. Second. We we need, well, first I was going salary first because it's at the top, so superintendent salary to. To to freeze outside of the cost of living adjustment. Then yes, Travis, the motion's open for for both the equipment and that motion. On which ones are on all? So Travis makes a motion to freeze the superintendent rate outside of the cost of living adjustment. And to approve the small equipment and large equipment purchases. Small equipment is a line item for three thousand and the. Large equipment is a line item for seventy five thousand, including a new side by side and. New superintendent truck. Is there a second Travis's motion?
Second.
Pardon seconds? Any further discussion? All favor.
I, I.
Is there, uh? That puts our total at the advertised total of seven eighty eight ten? Need questions for Park while they're here and while we have board members here? It, I only ask because it comes up from time to time. How's everything going with all of your? Satellite distributed. Distribution is to the other. You know. Nonprofits and parks and.
I didn't have any complaints till this year or last week of, uh, said no office of. I told you I could address that. Next year or. Point seven. We already started this from this. Other than that, I haven't had really feedback, you know, for additional or anything like that from them.
I I'm not sure. They they make those reports to you, right, on the?
Yeah.
You get financial reports every six months from?
Yes. Yeah, the report.
You both. Okay. That's probably.
Yeah, they've all come in. They'll pay it and tell they. With us doing for it.
Right at the beginning. Oh, we're what?
I don't think we have anything. Else. Anything else for Park? All right, we'll move to statewide nine one one. Total is one sixty one before fifty six. I don't think we have any. Ending items here. Nothing for Tyler. Tyler, anything for us? Last call. Looking at reassessment. Over was three hundred two thirty three. What's your red numbers in there, dude? You know what red numbers were in spreadsheet?
No. I was amazed that he was able to decrease his travel expense. That was my why. And I talked with him that fact three. And he said they were having less training sessions this year. Or that's one of. What was the other one on?
Group insurance.
It's a little higher than what we. You know. A couple hundred bucks. Higher than what it probably means to you. I don't think he caught it there. You know, it was the same creamy position.
Think we need to do something there? You think it's just just called to our attention?
You could cut it by a couple hundred if you wanted to. And be safe.
Basically, we rounded it out. It's one three thousand rounded up. I'm sorry.
One, three times three. Sixty nine thousand. Eric moves to change it to sixty nine thousand. Is there a second? Travis, seconds, all favor.
All right.
That moves it to. Two nine ninety nine seventy eight. Ready to move to probation. Adult probation admin sixty three hundred. And then down to supplemental adult probation. Forty eight two sixty four. Don't have any notes there. Went down to supplemental juvenile at three thousand. And then down to pretrial diversion. At a hundred and seventeen one ninety seven. Uh, I did talk to Darren a little bit about revenue on pretrial. He said there they are preparing a policy change. They're going to extend the pretrial like currently a lot of it's six month. They're looking at changing some of them to nine month. Which which will. He expects to have a little bit of a revenue. Increase, um, it's not shown on here as a fund because it's all local. Revenue, but he expected a twelve fifteen thousand dollar annual bump in. The way things are. Currently, because right now our spend rate is a little higher than what the revenue is. As something we're gonna have to keep our eyes on and watch. Yeah, last year's revenue twenty twenty four revenue was. Sixty around sixty eight thousand. Got an end of year cash balance of two hundred and seven. So. We're spending it pretty hot compared to what the revenue is. So we have to watch closely next year. We have one, two employees. Paid out of here. You know, and those two employees alone are going to be over what the, uh. What the revenue is. I think if we get to where if if he can get the income up to where it covers those, I think a lot of those other things may be able to be. Found in another location.
Three years ago, it was nine and some thousand a year. When it was sixty seven thousand last year. And now I think we'll do good if we get forty. So it's definitely gone down, you know, depending upon when he puts in the. Uh, policy changer.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
He also mentioned this. A lot of this is 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 based on, uh, trooper activity. He's shared that with us before based on. New 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 troopers seem to maybe write more interstate tickets than. Season troopers. And so. Maybe if we've got a fleet of new youngins out there sometimes it, uh. That picks up that revenue. Portionally.
Is every trial is strictly. Traffic related.
It's a traffic, low level misdemeanor and and nonviolent. Felon, or I guess not. Simple felonies that. Person doesn't have any other risk like. I hate to use this analogy, but if you had, you know, two guys in a bar fight, that could be a. That can be a felony battery. And so, you know, that that kind, you know, but you got to make sure that. There's not greater risks or. Trace I know more about than I do. That's that's just the analogy that went through my mind.
So they pay the pretty wrong being and they just keep their nose clean for.
Yeah.
That long.
Yeah, that's where the majority of it is, I think, is trafficking.
Yeah.
Let's say a lot of like the the fishing game violations, they go here a lot of times too, I think. Better. When you catch too many bluegill and don't. Right now we don't have a problem, but it's something we're watching. Okay, so the equipment does require action. Don't know what that is. I I mean, I think we've made it clear our concerns here. I don't know. I don't think he'll spend it if he doesn't need it. So will you make a motion to prove equipment? Bring moves equipment for approval is their second. Second. Jeff, seconds, all favor.
All right.
With that, I think we're ready to move on. Counting law enforcement continuing in, there's a seven hundred and fifty dollars. Piece there. Jury user fee fifteen thousand for. Jury expenses is noted. The canine fund, which is a donation fund that's to appropriate a certain level there thirty three hundred. Again, the sheriff's donation fund, which is for miscellaneous donations. Is it five thousand? LEPC. Was a very low. I think it went up by a thousand dollars between last year. That was for the. The training contact, if I remember right, wasn't it? Yeah. Yeah, I'm still moving. We are. Ready for, uh, forty nine fifty, which is the public safety sheriff. Revenue estimate, uh, as. With EMS is eight oh two one thirty seven. And we've got overtime in there and the road deputies in there and we have a vehicle in there. At fifty thousand. You know, so we are just barely over with eight oh nine on the. Expansiture. You know, so we are just barely over, uh, with eight oh nine on the expenditure. Eight oh nine, three thirty eight. Is there a motion on the vehicle? To prove, is second by anyone? Max seconds. All favor?
Alright.
Alright. Motion carries, uh, six oh, great step down. And then is there a, um, not really any equipment in here, so. Sheriff, I don't know if there's anything else to talk about there. So stays at eight oh nine, three thirty eight. Sheriff, uh, drone program donation, it's a forty six hundred. And, and the opioid. And that's the Good Samaritan, that's right. In jail.
Yes.
That's not the. So we did not budget opioid for the RISE program, did we?
That has to be. Additional appropriation. Well, you will have a number, it, it's not a calendar year budget, and so they'll get.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so it, it won't. When, maybe October of next year is when it comes to an end. And then we'll know more then, how much of money we're going to get.
But, but we don't have either, what we'll spend and payments to them, and, or did we pay them up?
Uh, if we appropriate it. The seventy five thousand was appropriate.
So that was.
So it'll be an encumbrance, because it's a contract, a portion of it will be an encumbrance.
Okay.
Maybe pay for only.
Yes.
We approved the sheriff's vehicle, or you're indisposed. Would you like the record to reflect your vote? So make a, edit sheriff's, uh. Vehicle vote, motion for seven, Travis moved and Max. There's only about three lineups, and we'd already adjusted the overtime. There are about, uh. There are five thousand dollars in, in the red, as far as the, yes, the income versus. Alright, so. As presented. The overall. We're running a twenty two point four million dollar a year company. And that includes a, a three percent of numbers. Twenty two, four, twenty four, nine, twenty three. We need to, uh. Circle back and, uh, discuss overall cost of living adjustment, and we need to, and if we need to reflect that to the solid waste budget as well. Audrey, I think my spreadsheet. I think you unhide those columns on the, uh, two percent, one percent. No, are you, are you displaying, or is Judy displaying?
She has it open up.
Are you, you displaying?
Yeah.
I didn't know whose, I thought you said it.
I didn't, it's, but I've. I didn't have my total card.
Something's not.
Well, I don't have, like, we're gonna have to come back in and make all the changes every day, it's likely though.
Yeah. Well, it's like, it's like they're going, it's like they're going in the wrong direction, though.
Well, because the one that's both a one percent and a two percent has, uh, fully pilots.
Oh, it has that dispatch thing in it? Gotcha. You, so you know what a one, what a, what the one percent. Number, what a one percent of the total wages. Number is. Overall, yeah.
No, no, I don't have that one.
There were these, no. We do, but it's, there's an error in it.
That error was acknowledged at the beginning.
Yeah, it's there, it's because of that dispatch. That dispatch position, the one percent number includes that.
The forty five, five, well, oh.
Now you should subtract out the forty five, five hundred, so.
Yeah.
Based off of the published. And then it changes, because it's including the forty five, five hundred.
And then include it to three percent.
I think we can get it here, right? I think a one percent number is around a hundred and sixty one, four fifty five. So one sixty one, five. I got that, taking her published total with, if we added the dispatch problem to it. And then subtracting your one percent number. Which that should get it, right?
Well, like, you can generally, the one percent is subtracted out of forty five hundred. And then go off of the.
Oh, that would be high, because that's got everything in it, hold on.
Yeah, because, well, we can't, we all close numbers because of the other changes that we made.
I understand, just follow me, make sure I'm thinking about this, try to go back to where you just were, that's fun. Your yellow box down there at the very bottom, that says with three percent dispatch.
Oh, that was based off of the published budget.
I, I know.
Okay.
That was published, add, add the three percent dispatch number, right?
You take the twenty two, seven, ninety five, six, one, seven, plus the forty five hundred, gives you, um, that. And so.
Twenty two. Seven, nine, five, which is the published budget.
Plus forty five, five hundred, gives you this, total, this.
Right, 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 I understand.
This one.
So, so, but your, your one percent column that was hidden, the J, right there where you're at. I would have assumed that the dispatch number was in there.
Right, it is.
So can you, that's why I'm saying, can you not deduct? Twenty two, six, seventy nine, six, sixty two, from twenty two, eight, forty one, 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 seven, and that's where I got. A rough one percent number.
So you're saying, take this, subtract this.
Yeah.
But this one's not quite right, because of the changes that we made, that we dropped today, doesn't include that, it loses, so I would add to.
Which was, which was pretty minimal, though.
Well, if you take two, two, seven, nine, five, six, seventeen, minus the two, two, four.
Yeah, that's not built into the wages.
But that's not way.
But it's in that, huh?
That's.
That's why I chose.
Yeah, hundred and sixty one thousand, as I said, it's in the.
That's right.
That's true.
So take the two, two, seven, nine, five, six, seventeen. Minus the two, two, four, two, four, nine, two, three, and then take. So whatever that difference is.
But that's total on everything.
So.
One's the salaries.
So what if we take and have totaled today?
We took one, totter and twice, we took one of them out.
A hundred and nine.
Two hundred and one for. We can just have three, sixty five, three, seven, five thousand.
And take that off.
Subtract out from the two, two, six, seven, nine, of three hundred and seventy thousand, and then you can do that.
The two, two, six, seventy nine, everything, but.
I got it, so take two, two, eight, four.
Salaries.
How much? What was our cut number?
Forty five, five.
Three seventy.
Oh, that number. Yeah.
Twenty two, four seventy one. And then subtract out the one percent number that.
Yes.
Point two, six, seventy nine. Only short, I was, I was threw away. Or I didn't take out forty five, I said. But the fourth, eventually, four, five, one, is. I guess where I'm at, guys, is at three percent, though, we are. The, 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 the two things that we really have to look at hard on three percent are. EMS. M V H and general fund. That's where all your people are, everything else is just here or there.
Your public service.
Yeah, that, that's still public safety, I'm sorry, that's still public safety, I mean, I said EMS, but, you know, it's both, it's both. Going, going back to where Greg, Gary Todd, said, this is probably the last year we can work at a. At a three percent number until we get the taxes ironed out. I guess that's leaning me towards. You know, the general fund's a huge indicator there, and we're in pretty good shape on general. I really, I never dreamed when we started this process, we would, we would be a part of this, or we could even consider three. But I think we can. This general fund revenue's estimated at, you know, nine point five, and we're at nine point three in expenses. With the three percent. And no, and we gotta add another forty five thousand for Kyler in there, we're still. Still well below.
Well, we didn't realize what the assessed value was going to come out. When we started, it's, it's higher than, and it's higher than Greg. He anticipated because he did not understand the solar that was going in, and it was raising some problems. Uh, I would not have guessed when we started that we were going to come out with eight hundred and eighty three, you know, N A B. But we did. Now, and I talked to Mike, that's one of the times, I say, I have a mind to move. Does he think that we're going to still have some increases next year, too, and that answer was yes. You know, depending upon the things we heard this morning. So I think in that regard, we're better off than the other guys.
But I don't know that. The growth will be, the growth will go up, but I'm not sure what, you know, when those deductions will, was deducted.
Right, I mean, that's, that's an unknown, I, I'm uncertain as to that last three hundred. But honestly, in this county, we don't have a bunch of the homes at that higher level. You know, it's gonna be more like a hundred and fifty, rather than three hundred to add on to the.
Back to the death by fast.
Yeah. So I think those things. At this point in time are in our favor, now, I agree with you, if, if they hold to the four, no growth quotient next year and the year after. The only way we'll grow is if we grow with assessed plan.
How much land has been changed from farmland to industrial?
It didn't give me that number, I, I don't know.
Because it was not critical. That multiplying four, five thousand acres possibly, but critical.
Right.
That's a pretty good sized number, seven.
Yes. I agree. I think we're in a better place than we, we could have. You know, I think we're seeing the benefits of, of it, even though we don't like it.
Well, we'll soon start having those economic development things, just coming in too, the tree on that.
We should see some of those in twenty six.
And those aren't touching.
That's right.
Nor, and they're not in the revenue forecast.
That's right.
Yeah, I suppose three percent cost of living with the, with the, uh. Not including the exceptions previous. Second, I do. Travis, seconds. Alright, that's a step in the right directions, or any further discussion on the motion? Last. Motion made seconded for cost of living adjustment of three percent, which would also include solid waste or. Let's do that separate, because it's a. Motion made seconded for, um, three percent with the exceptions noted, and Judy has those in the minutes. All favor?
Now this is now just kind of final, right, till.
No, it would have, everything is still subject to five, any motions made of the last meeting before adoption. But I think we're in a pretty good spot.
Yeah, I think we can do things, pretty objective where you know.
I had no, I had no dissent there, right, it was all in favor? Yes. Now I need a motion to, um, uh. Set the solid waste budget as a binding budget with the three percent. I'll make that, great moves, is there a second? Say, by Max, all favor? There anything I'm missing or forgetting? The big, the big takeaway from the day, really, the only thing that's still up in the air would be a discussion on Toca Township. I will call and speak with, uh, board president. Talk to you guys too, if he needs to talk to them, or we will open their input. Anything else that we're still pending? Anything else that we're still pending? Are there any motions we need adjourned? Party moves, is there a second? Back seconds, all favor?
I I'm for adjourned.
Are we, let's uh.